Good to know. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6-HSE of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Want to call the role, Nora?
Mr. Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan.
Yes.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Here.
Mr. Frey.
Yes.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Mr. Oylund.
Here.
Chairman Iratain.
Present.
Sub-Board Planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our Board Engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our Board Attorney, Mr. King.
Start off the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a heart of justice for all.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none and see none. We have some resolutions, Nora?
We have one.
One resolution?
One.
This is a resolution of denial. So, an affirmative vote means you're voting to deny. Application 1921, Pacific Outdoor Advertising, would somebody like to move that resolution?
Second Jaskowitz.
Any discussion? Nora, call the role.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Frey.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Oylund.
Yes.
Iratain.
Yes. Okay. Takes care of that. There's no correspondence of any type?
Nope.
Okay. So, let's go right into the agenda and into the applications. Application 2230, Chad, Hembry, 578 Lake Shore Drive, C-Varians to construct an open deck with landing and stairs, entranceway, no roof, with stairs to the rear and stairs to the front. Applicant is here.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony about give before the board's true self you got? For the record, you're Chad Hembry, you're the owner of this subject property?
Correct.
I think you can simply speak into the mic.
Okay, you're in an R4 zone and you have a 4,000 square foot lot, which is undersized for the zone. The zone is 6,000, so you have somewhat of a handicap starting off. Sure. You're looking for 36.9% yards and cords, open deck, and 52% impervious coverage. I understand that there is a correspondence from Mr. Lizza, our municipal engineer, and have you seen this letter? Have you seen this memo dated June 11?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
About just to make sure, I have June 13 on my.
That's not where my eyes are. Sorry.
I want to.
Okay, the applicant is proposing to further increase the impervious coverage and building coverage on the lot. Property already exceeds the permitted impervious coverage by 7.35% or 294 square feet and is proposed to increase to 472 square feet over the maximum amount allowed in the zone. This will result in increase in stormwater runoff in the property. Applicant is required to provide stormwater measures to mitigate the runoff from the 472 square feet of surface area, either with seepage pits or other stormwater management devices. All underground roof leader pipes that will be discharging to a seepage pit shall be constructed with perforated pipe and placed in a stone bed in accordance with township engineering details unless otherwise directed by the township engineer. Proposed grading information has not been provided, however, the area proposed for this deck is relatively flat, therefore, it appears the lot will accommodate the new deck with little or no change in the grade. If the applicant decides to change the grade of the property or move five cubic yards or more, the soil moving permit is required. So, how are we gonna reconcile what you want to do with the engineer's report?
Yes, I've been in contact with the engineer department and we've, we're still finalizing exactly like the exact details, but we've come to the conclusion that we're going to create a rain garden that they are, they're happy with, with this, with this idea. Basically, we're going to take from our downspouts, from our gutters, we're going to take the water that comes from there and they are going to go into a rain garden in the yard, which is going to allow that, that water to run off in a, in a safe way that they-
It'll be a managed situation?
Managed situation, yes.
Okay, and the engineer and you are in cahoots to do this? You're-
Yes, I've been speaking with Brandon specifically.
When did you meet with him and come to this solution?
I've been speaking with Brandon off and on for the last few weeks.
Because I have a letter dated October 11, which is subsequently the same that was read out.
Right, I have an email from the engineering department. I sent it to Bob and to Pete today. It came to me after five that Brandon's been working with the applicant on this.
All the improvements are in place, correct? And we're gonna modify something. Yes.
Have you built it, have you built the deck yet?
No, the deck has not been built. We haven't started.
Everything else is, though.
Excuse me?
All the other paved areas are there.
There is an old deck there and an old porch and I'm looking to replace that.
John, is that, is that on Lisa Vanderhoff, that report?
Yeah.
No, what are you talking about?
I have one dated October 11, 2000, Lisa Vanderhoff.
Yeah, this is the, that's the-
This is, no, Hembry.
Hembry, yeah.
Okay, I didn't answer that. All right, I'm gonna read the email that we, yeah, the email we got today. Just wanted to give a heads up that Chad from 578 Lake Shore Drive has indeed been in contact with engineering and is coming up with a plan to mitigate for the additional impervious coverage referenced in our June 13, 2022 memo. Please feel to reach them, please feel free to reach out if your questions are concerned. So, any approval we give him would be subject to a finalization of your discussions with him and a plan that meets the engineer. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. You're not asking for any side yard setbacks, no rear yard setbacks, front yard setbacks, pretty much just have a pervy, the fact you got a 4,000 square foot lot.
Yeah, that's the biggest issue.
Which I wish the, I wish the fathers of the early 20th century had said, "No, no four, no four, no four." What?
Started out at 20 feet.
Or the, or the Mount Taber ones, what about a 12 by 36? Any other questions by the board?
There's a side yard setback.
There is?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that's not what I see. Only two items.
He's proposing zero.
I got two items.
Yeah, what's going on here?
Oh.
Oh.
Existing six.
Accessory side yard, what is that for?
There's a deck in the, in the porch and we want the, the, on the side of the house is where the porch is and the front porch is, it's old and it's awkward and it's, it's not even, the correct size, we can't even open up our storm door fully. So, we just wanna, what we wanna do is just widen that so we can open it up, so we can, so we can open up a door, our storm door safely and have a more welcoming, functional-
Can you speak a little bit louder?
The side of the house. It's on the side, what, it's an exit door, there's a-
Yes, that's the main entry to the house.
Okay.
And, that's the main entry?
Yes.
It looks like the stairs are on the backside.
Yeah.
Away from the front of the house.
Yeah, that's, that's the, another thing, it's not that functional. You have to go around into the back and then go up. It's awkward.
Are you redoing this?
Uh, yes, I, I, that's the plan.
And the stairs will be in the front at that point?
Correct.
Because the proposed that we have has the stairs in the back.
I don't see any stairs proposed from the front.
Yeah, well, that's what he said, that's what I'm asking. The stairs are proposed for the back, not the front. If he's redoing this, I would think the stairs would be here.
It looks like the stairs are on the side, that note on the left side.
Entranceway with two sets of stairs.
Yeah, there is a front and a back, because so you can get to the backyard. It would, like, there'd be a larger-
So, there's steps in the front and in the back?
Yes, so you can go through to the backyard.
How do you get to those stairs? You gonna put a walkway in to get, but that, is that included in the coverage?
No, it's not, because we would, we're planning to put some pavers in or, or like some brick or something that can be, nothing permanent.
The engineer that you're talking with at town, does he know that?
Yes.
You really should be showing those on the plans.
Oh, okay.
My suggestion is similar to the last week, couple, you don't know where the rain garden is, you don't have the walkway on the plan. This is an emergency situation, you want to get it done, but I would suggest you further finalize this plan with the town engineer and show all the pavement, the walkway or whatever it's gonna be on the plans and the board can see everything.
Really, we're just, just a stepping stone? It's not, like, we're not, we're just thinking it's like a stepping stone. We're not adding like a whole walkway.
I mean, just like putting those round concrete blocks.
Yeah, like something you just get from Home Depot. Well, I use the wrong term. I, like, it, just like, sit, like-
I think as you move forward with this, you're gonna decide you need a more firm walkway. These stepping stones are fine going from a pool to someplace, but as a main entrance way to your house, I, I don't think you're gonna be satisfied with it.
Especially if you want to push something with wheels.
Chair, can we approve a contingent on him having an agreement with the engineer on the sidewalk and the, and the back this way?
Problem with that, though, is we're already at 55% impervious coverage without knowing how big this paver wall's gonna be and what that's gonna do.
And I hear you, but if he's with the engineer and he's addressing the water issue with the engineer, don't you think that'd be good enough?
Well, you're not gonna make the lot bigger, that's for sure. He's stuck with a 4,000 square foot lot.
No, with the water mitigation, rain guard and all, that will cover impervious coverage.
He may increase that impervious coverage, so whatever you grant today, he may increase it, which will bring him back to this board. So, I think to John's point, if he has everything locked down and then he knows what he needs from the variance, he won't have to come back here. Is that correct, John?
That's right. I mean, it gets, it gets long-term, too. You go to sell this house someday, lawyer comes in, says, "Where's the plan that reflects this resolution?" "We don't have it." Then you'll be coming back here whenever that occurs. We have it all the time. So, I think you're better off tying this thing up-
Do it right.
-completely than trying to rush it through.
Okay. I'm not building this deck in January or February, right? No. Do you see any other obstacles? This is the second time I've been here and I, I just don't want to come and get a third time and there be another obstacle that's found. Do you, is there anything else you could find?
It's not an obstacle.
Well, I'm sorry.
I know, what they're trying, the board is trying to do is to help you so you don't have to come back.
Right.
Because if you don't put that, that, if you put a walkway, that's impervious coverage.
Sure.
So, if they give you what you want now and you put a walkway, you're in violation, so you're gonna have to come back here. So, you might as well do it right. You're talking to the engineer, explain to him what you want to do, and then if he has to build out that rain guarding, garden a little bit more, you can say, "We'll build it out another few foot and then you can have your walkway." So, work with him, you're there, so.
Right, right.
Where's the rain garden going?
In the backyard. It'll, it'll be about, be over 30 feet from the, the house, maybe 35 feet.
You have that much room behind the house?
See, you know, if you have to come back again and you have all your ducks in a row, it's a five-minute application. That's, that's the situ, I mean, you come here many nights, I go through six, six residential applications in 40 minutes.
Okay.
But, you know, if you, if there's questions and, you know, Mr. Kaplan is very right in questioning it and, you know, Mr. Chadwick, you know, I just think you'd be, we would all be better served if you- When can we get him back in here?
March 8.
March 8. That's the earliest, huh?
Yes.
We're not doing a 7 o'clock meeting this next year?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay. It's like, it's like asking if you want root canal without Novocain. March 8, okay?
Yes.
And I'm telling you, if you come back complete, you'll walk out of here with approval, you know, in, in 10 minutes.
Sure.
Okay?
Okay.
Now, are there any members, now, in terms of your, your neighbor who will, where will have zero clearance on the side of the house, have you spoken to them at all? Are they, are they aware of what you're doing? Has, has there been any conversations, any problems? What's on that side of the house? Is there any shrubbery, bushes or anything?
I haven't spoken with them, but there's, there's nothing on that side of the house in between us. There's even the, the main, the other side of the house is, on their side is their, more where their activity is, is where they park their cars, where they get into their homes, so they're, they're not on this side of the house.
Okay. So, we're sympathetic to your lot size and your need and your wanting to move forward.
Can't get, rent zero coverage and impervious coverage without a plan. So, come back with a plan addressing those with the engineer's comments and you'll probably be able to go.
Okay.
I'd like to make a suggestion that you also go back to the zoning department, show them where the walk is, let them calculate it, and they'll do an updated review.
Okay.
And you'll give all extensions?
What was the date and what? You have to provide extensions of the application and there will be no further notice required. This is the only notice that the public will get. Most of you carry this case to March 8 without notice and with whatever extensions are required.
Second Jaskowitz.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay. Thank you, we'll see you on March 8.
Thank you for your time.
It's all, it's all word to me. Okay, application 2251, Lisa Vanderhoff.
Yes.
72 upper Rainbow Trail, C-Varians to legalize the driveway walk and two sets of stairs and construct the necessary retaining wall.
Will you both be testifying?
Yes.
Okay, raise your right hands. Do you swear a firm testimony you're about to receive, are you about to provide to the board's true self you got?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Lisa Vanderhoff, V-A-N-D-E-R-H-O-O-F.
Your name, sir?
Ken Vanderhoff.
Ken, okay.
Double O-F.
And you're the owners of the subject property?
Correct.
Thank you, you swore, Mr. Chairman, the witnesses are sworn.
So, the driveway's already there, the walkway's already there, the stairs are already there, and you want to construct a three-foot-high and necessary retaining wall?
That was already there.
Says it's already there.
Yeah, I just wanna, your plan and design standards, your existing four-foot, allowed five-foot, proposed four-foot, impervious coverage 58.48 where only 30% is allowed. You're in Rainbow Lakes, I take it, correct?
Yes.
You are in R3 zone, and R3 zone is a 15,000 square foot zone, and you have 4,635 square feet, a little bit under the minimum. You want to tell us how this all happened?
Yeah, go ahead.
We, our driveway and walkways and walls have been falling apart and we needed to get them put back together. Our contractor that we hired did not realize we were in Parsippany because of our mailing address being Denville. He thought we were a Denville municipality, so he did not file for the correct permits.
Wait a minute, did Denville issue permits for this property?
No, he thought, he, apparently Denville does not require permits because we were just replacing what was already there, we were not doing anything.
Okay, so you're, you're saying you didn't just put all of this in?
No, this was, this was repairing what was already existing.
And when did you buy the house?
In 1987. 1997, I'm sorry.
1997, and, and all of this was there when you bought it?
Correct.
But you expanded the driveway?
No, they aren't. No. No.
If you look at the existing proposed, the drawn-in piece looks like it was exist-
It's got a, it's got a label there, proposed walkway. Is there a walkway being proposed?
No, everything, everything that we did, the proposed driveway and proposed walkway, that, those were there.
Who prepared the plan? Put these labels on it? You?
No.
No, that would be the zoning department.
Okay. So, everything exists and it's all replacement?
Exactly, correct.
Because we have a report from the, right, engineer, town engineer, that is raising a lot of questions similar to what you heard the applicant before. Stormwater management.
Do you have that letter?
Does your, do you have that letter?
Yes.
Did your property run from tilt back towards the lake? Are you on the lake?
Yes, we are.
So, you tilt back?
Correct.
Obviously, the lake's not high.
No, no.
Well, there is a lake across the street that's higher than that.
But that's, and that wall is formed there. But that's the town wall.
Town wall, draw cracked.
Okay.
They may have to say something about that.
Okay, you have no street parking there, right? You don't park in the driveway, you'd better be riding a bike, huh?
Exactly. I mean, we, you can park on the street, but-
Snow, snow, anything.
And they're very narrow streets, so we, you really should not park.
And the retaining wall that the engineer said has already been constructed was there, you just replaced it?
Correct. Everything that was-
You didn't put nothing new in it?
We put nothing, we did not widen anything.
Okay. How did you get here? Yeah, why are you here? That's what I was gonna ask.
Because we received a letter, apparently, from the engineering department.
Did somebody call against you?
Yes.
Did you get a letter from zoning?
Somebody called against us. Yes, from zoning.
Who, okay.
Yes.
And it's, and what was previously, previously put up, was there permits for that originally or you have no idea?
I have no idea, that was done years before.
And I just want to make it clear that on the survey where the item, the items that are marked proposed is because they're legalizing it, they never have permits to begin with. Not you, I realize the previous owners, but that is why it's marked proposed on the survey.
When was it replaced? When did you do the work?
In October, November.
This year, 2022?
Yes.
When was the house built originally? You have any idea?
In the 1920s, almost 95 years ago.
Okay.
So, so let's get back to the engineer's report. Did you receive the engineer's report about mitigating the runoff from the driveway?
Yes, and I spoke to them about that. We do not have any runoff. If everything slants down, goes-
Into the pond.
Into the, yes.
Mr. Chaz, what do you think?
If it's existing, if there's no problems, if it's been created, it's been there forever, I would-
Chaz, please pull down your microphone.
Talking to your mic.
Whatever the township engineer decides is, really, what would be the ultimate here. If there's no problems, if it's been created, then there may be a need to put in some kind of filtering system, but it looks like there's a swell in the property, so I would just have the applicant discuss the same with township engineer.
And the-
I think if, Chaz, when we get into that, you know, his discipline is going to be a stormwater system needs to be here. They're saying-
It's never been there.
It runs down from the street, crossed our property into the lake.
Yes.
So, we're gonna get into a situation with them, but they are not gonna be able to get out of it.
And I actually spoke to the engineer when we received that letter because I was concerned about that, and he said to, you know, bring that up in front of the board and whatever was decided. He didn't see that there was a problem.
But he didn't, he didn't correspond that?
Yeah, right.
You've, you've spoken with him after he wrote this letter in October?
Correct, yes.
And who's him? Is it Mr. Lizza?
Well, there's two of them. Who's the one besides Lizza?
I'm just, I'm back there.
Nora?
I honestly don't-
There's several, there's Paul, there's Brandon, but Justin is the main.
Can we go, can we go back to, do, do you know how old the house is?
The house itself was built in the 1920s.
So, we could be dealing with a situation that pre, pre-
Exists, yeah.
Pre-exist, the zoning laws even. There might have been a gravel driveway there, there might have been whatever there, we don't know. And they say they bought the place in 96, the driveway was already there. You know, I, I, I realize that we've got to be protective of a lot of things, but- Is there any member of the public who's here for this application? So, none of your neighbors are here, right?
No, no, they're, they-
No problem with your neighbors?
They-
My neighbors actually have the wall.
Because it looks much nicer than what was there.
Now, what about the three-foot wall? What, what's, what's going on there? Replace an existing wall?
Yes, there was already stone walls there, we just replaced what was there.
You replaced everything that was there with new, better-looking stuff?
Correct.
Now, my only question is, why did you get a complaint filed against you? Do you have any idea?
To be honest with you, because I was a trustee on the board of the community and there are some neighbors that are fighting with their share that is going on in our lake, and every time a board, a board member has done something with their property, they have-
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, point 52, right away, I think that has construction of towns right away, so that'd be a requirement in the resolution. They would need a permit, they did some construction in the right away.
So, can that, can they, is that attainable? Can they get that?
They would have to get it from the town.
Do we have to put that on a resolution?
I'm looking at the plan, which-
The engineer in, in point 5 of his letter, October 11, 2022.
But where's that on the plan? I don't see it.
Well, it's in the front, currently, yeah.
The driveway was there, did you repave the driveway?
We repaved the driveway, yes.
Same, same?
The same, right, we did not extend it out. The driveway went right to the road.
Is that, is the concrete wall still in the right way?
It looks like you put a wall. On the, on the plan, there's a wall that extends, if you're looking at your driveway to your left, that's in the town's right away. And is that one of the walls that you constructed?
That was there, yes.
You just replaced that wall?
Yes, we replaced that.
And then juts out into the street?
No.
The right away.
It's hard to, it's hard to tell.
Right, the survey does show it, so I would, I would say the, from the drainage issue, there hasn't been any problems, I don't see any concerns there, but the township right away would have to be addressed.
Okay.
You're willing to do that?
That, I just go and file a permit for?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions by the board?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, I have a question, is there anything, any work you did that was not there before? Anything new?
No, absolutely.
It's all new, but it's replacing what was there?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thanks.
No other questions by the board? Any members of the?
Just for clarification, when the engineer says, stormwater management measures are required. That's unambiguous, but he can say, I went to the site and I'm good, right?
That's what they're, I think they're saying.
I know they're saying there's a conversation, but the only documentation we have is unambiguous.
True.
There's a lot of ambiguous things here, because we don't know when the first driveway was put in.
Should we put in subject to review of stormwater with the engineer?
That's what we just discussed, if you get into a stormwater.
I don't want to put them in a circle where they can't get out again.
I don't think they can. They don't have any space.
Yeah.
So we have to kind of grant it?
Can't throw a rain garden in there? I mean. They have a lake right behind the.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and there's not even any room in our backyard for a rain garden.
They're not, they're not the only ones whose runoff is going into that lake, every house is. I mean, sometimes we just have to realize that we're not gonna solve the ills of the world. And let, you know.
I totally get it, but I want to know that when an engineer says something, we're giving it full consideration, that's it.
How about you do this, you feel comfortable that the engineer will put in writing what you two spoke about?
Yes.
So you can have it subject to the town engineer concurring with something?
Documenting his recent, tell of conversation.
Could be the existing drainage?
Yeah. Existing drainage is not an issue, apparently.
We've never, even during Sandy, we did not have any problems.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, support of this application? I hear none, seen none. We don't need to go to conference, do we? Is there anybody close to this? Okay, somebody make a statement as to why we should approve it. I think a lot of the conversation we've had is indicative of the situation.
I believe if the applicant is willing to comply with all the added requirements and agreement with the engineer, that I would be approving this application as written.
Somebody frame a resolution?
I can do it. Application 2251 Lisa Vanderhoff, 72, Upper Rainbow Trail. Block 117, Lot 34, in the R3 zone, I recommend the board grant the C variances to legalize the driveway, walk, and two sets of stairs. And construct a necessary retaining wall contrary to Section 430-275X and Section 430-35, column 13.
Seconded. Any discussion, Nora Colerole?
Josh Switz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Marie.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Ira King.
Yes. Results is variance is granted.
Thank you.
No problem.
You too.
Merry Christmas.
Good luck.
See you all dressed for it, that's for sure.
He's trying to outdo me with that shirt, and now I'm upset. I have a dog. Okay. Application 2250, Sri Developers LLC, this is what we're doing, yes. A bifurcated application, CD variance to construct a sports entertainment venue. Looks like Mr. O'Neil is representing the applicant. Good evening, Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you pointed out, this is a bifurcated application for Sri Development. It's the property at 1259 to 1269 Route 46, it's currently occupied by an office park, that whole park is coming down. For the sports and entertainment venue, here to describe the nature of that use, Mr. Waldo, corporate representative of Topgolf.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear a firm testimony about the report before the board, so true self you got? And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Yes. Todd.
Todd?
Todd Waldo, W-A-L-D-O, with Topgolf, 8750 North Central Expressway, Dallas, Texas.
And you'll be testifying factual on operation?
Yes, he will.
Yes.
He'll be referring to a slide deck which is currently projected on the screen.
Do we want to mark that?
Can you just kill that one set of lights over the screen, Nora?
Thank you.
Yeah, we can dim the lights, but good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening.
We have an exciting project to present before you tonight, and as Mr. O'Neil mentioned, I don't know how many folks are familiar with Topgolf, we certainly will. Okay, very good. Well, we have two venues in the state of New Jersey, one down in Edison and the other in Mount Laurel, which is outside of Philadelphia. But Topgolf is a premier golf entertainment use. We are an industry leader with the best-in-class business operation. It consists of a full-service restaurant and bar and a driving range component. What we're proposing here is a three-story venue with 102 hitting bays, all the latest and greatest technology and full food and beverage service as part of that, a lot of mixed uses within it. Outdoor spaces, rooftop terrace, outdoor patio as an outdoor golf entertainment use. So we have a few slides we'd like to share with you tonight. I don't know if anybody can see this, we can dim the lights if necessary, or can everybody see that okay?
Those lights here are over there in that wall.
The mayor's got it. No, the resident janitor is gonna fix that, oh, I'm sorry, it's the mayor.
So direct your attention. Certainly.
Not too many.
Good job there, sir.
If we can get to the next slide, can everybody see that okay? Okay, great. So just with the location we're proposing, I think everybody's familiar off of Route 46, wedged in between Smithfield Park and the Target Shopping Center. This project is about the responsible redevelopment of underutilized property and it will create economic benefit for the entire community and certainly a best-in-class entertainment destination for the township and the surrounding area. It's 10 and a half acres. This project, again, will create upwards of 400 jobs, that's when the venue is fully operational. Create over 200 jobs during construction and will generate about a million-plus dollars of revenue for this property. It's a high-profile project that has many benefits for the community, both from an economic development perspective and just from a community perspective based on some of our programs and offerings that we have at Topgolf. Can we get to the next slide, please? So just a little bit about the company, again, I know Chairman, Mr. Chairman, you've said you've been to a Topgolf before.
I'm in Mount Laurel.
Okay, great, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just sent that.
Austin.
Okay, all right, there you go.
Peony Sars, yes, we've been there.
In my opinion, it was a true entertainment. I mean, the golf is very nice, but I felt that the entertainment part of it.
Yes, sir.
It's just so, you know.
You don't have to be a golfer to enjoy Topgolf.
No, no.
That's for sure. Well, just a little bit about Topgolf.
She's not a golfer, so.
For folks that are unfamiliar, we're a wholly-owned subsidiary of Callaway Golf Company, global sports entertainment company. We are a young but mature company, been around since 2000. And as of today, we have 86 venues operating around the world. Two of those, obviously, in New Jersey, today we just opened up a venue in Glasgow, Scotland. So we are a company that is going through a growth pattern now and wanting to bring this golf entertainment experience to the folks of the township of Parsippany. We've, as I mentioned, some of the economic development benefits, this is a multimillion-dollar investment in the community. We've been looking in northern New Jersey for a number of years and are very impressed with the township based on the leadership, the very pro-business attitude, developer-friendly, but also the accessibility and regional, regionality of the site is second to none with the crossroads of major interstates and this site is perfectly located for that, so extreme amount of economic development benefits, but community benefits that we'll get into as well. Can we get to the next slide, please? Mr. Chairman, as we've mentioned, most of our customers consider themselves non-golfers. And this is, Topgolf has proven to be kind of a gateway to green grass golf, but some people's first introduction to the game. Our goal is to break down those barriers of entry and make golf inclusive for everyone. Whether you enjoy playing Topgolf or golf, or just want to come out and have a nice time with your family and friends. It truly is an entertainment destination. This is just kind of the evolution of the golfer, starting at Topgolf in most of our customer profiles. Next slide. Part of the appeal to Topgolf is what we call the Topgolf Advantage. It's fun, affordable, tech-driven, all-inclusive, and what's great around New Jersey, you can play it all year round. We have climate-controlled hitting bays with heat and fans to keep everybody comfortable during any time of the year. Topgolf takes great pride in getting involved with the community. Our community engagement is not only a top priority and a core focus of our corporate business, but also our folks at the venue itself. If you go to the slide, one of the big initiatives that we're very proud of and that we'd like to hopefully bring to Parsippany is the Youth Play at Ford Initiative. Essentially, as we've mentioned, we're trying to grow the game of golf through the youth. This allows any groups that are involved in mentoring the youth, any charities, high school golf teams, free gameplay at the venue during the weekday hours, that's, you know, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. This has been extremely popular across the country, we started this back in 2017. Very popular with high school golf teams and others as a great opportunity to practice their skills in a high-technology golf environment. We're also very proud to be, you know, offering discounts for gameplay for active military, veterans, first responders. Got discounts for gameplay, discounts for memberships, something that is one of our core focuses as well as appreciation for the military. Some of our national partners that you might have heard of, Make-A-Wish Foundation, I can't remember how many wishes we've created at Topgolf, but it's hundreds to thousands so far. Folds of Honor, I don't know if anybody's familiar with that, but that is a scholarship program for widows and children, fallen heroes. And then Bunkers in Baghdad, which we, can we go back to the previous slide? This is a photo of that, actually, we donate used golf equipment to troops overseas as a recreational opportunity while they're serving their country. One more, please. And then at the local level, certainly with our venue having 400-plus employees, we get involved in a lot of local causes within the community, and that's one that we'd like to partner partner with the township to identify nonprofit organizations and really have an opportunity to engage with the community and become a very good, you know, corporate citizen as well. So the experience itself, what's Topgolf all about? It can be as much or as little as you want, it can be as competitive or just for fun. We have a lot of programs that we offer for both kids and adults alike. We have certainly programs where we have golf instruction for the youth, that's called our Topgolf Coach. A lot of summer academies for the kids, winter academies, those are programs that are led by our instructors at Topgolf. We also have opportunities for special charities, fundraiser events, and things of that sort for Topgolf. Birthday parties, we've had everything happen at a Topgolf from a birthday party to a bar mitzvah, to a wedding. So you name it, it's happened at Topgolf before. The venue itself, so if you've been to Edison, if you've been to Austin, if you've been to some of the other venues, this is our brand-new prototype. It's very contemporary design, modern look, a lot of visual appeal to it. Very attractive building with a lot of articulation, a lot of glass, gives it a lot of visual interest. This is what we're proposing for Parsippany. Our latest and greatest, we have about 10 or 12 of these open across the country at this time. And it's really resonated with our guests, it's becoming an enhanced guest experience, continuing to learn from some of our older prototypes to bring the best and the best technology and the best experience we can to our guests. And this is a result of those exercises, but very clean lines, very modern-looking. And hopeful that you get a sense of the high quality of the operation.
Mr. Waldo, this is an actual picture of what the signage is gonna look like, can you get?
Yeah, if we can go back, yes. This is a photo of a light venue that we're proposing for Parsippany. So everything you see represented here is what is being proposed as part of this application tonight. There are a number of sign variances, but this gives you a feel for what is proposed for the front of the building. We have other slides to go into a little more detail. This is a representative photo of what we're proposing for Parsippany.
This is the, this would face Route 80?
That's correct.
80 or 46?
80.
Can we go back to the site plan slide, the second slide, please? I'll just give everybody a little orientation, so.
So that's the back, then?
That's the front of the building, but it will be facing 80. There we go.
We'll get into that.
Okay, so the building is composed of a three-story structure, then we have a. Is that working there? Then we have a five-acre outfield that has in-ground electronic targets, part of the gameplay experience. That outfield is enclosed and surrounded by net poles and barrier netting to keep all of the golf balls contained within the field of play. That will be oriented towards 46. Driveway entrances off of 46, which we'll discuss in more detail as part of the traffic engineer's testimony. But that gives you an orientation of how the building is placed on the site.
I'm sorry, 80 is on the bottom?
Yes, sir, 80 is on the south side, which is the bottom of this plan. And 46 is on the north side, on the top of the plan. Target to the right, to the east, and then Smithfield Park to the west. You can see the tennis courts and the ball fields on the left side. Right now, what exists are four office buildings on that property and a very expansive parking lot. Any questions just about the orientation real quick or the location?
Just real quick, though, so signage you show is gonna be at 80, what are you gonna have facing on 46 or that?
Yes, so we are proposing a monument sign at the main entrance off of 46 that will have Topgolf signage and then some building signage as well.
And all within the township guidelines.
Well, that's part of what we're asking for tonight. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to be sure.
Can we, sorry, I know we skipped around here, let's. There we go. We've got some more interior photos to share with you, again, just to give you a sense of scale and quality finishes. This is just the main entry lobby with views into the outfield and the hitting bays, customer service area. Let's go to the next slide, please. This is our two-story restaurant, bar, and video wall. And a lot of people come to Topgolf just to have a meal with their family and friends, this is certainly where you can consume that. But we also offer full food and beverage service at each of the hitting bays as well. Let's keep moving through here. We've got a private event space, about 3,000 square feet, that can accommodate up to 150 people. That has access to the T-line, the hitting bays as well. Full audiovisual controls there for full-service, off-campus meeting for corporate events or other types of private functions. All right, this is a view of the hitting bay, if you don't have golf clubs, that's all right, we've got all of the house clubs and equipment that you would need, all the balls. These bays, there's 102 of these across three levels. Each bay can accommodate about six to eight people. And all the technology and whatnot is within that bay for the gameplay experience. All right, another view of the T-line, you can see some of the technology, but also get a view out to the outfield with the in-ground targets. And also, you can see in the background the net poles, the netting and the net poles that are made to be relatively transparent, I have a sample of the netting with me tonight, if anybody'd like to see that. But the net poles are sky gray, so they kind of blend in with the background, and the netting itself is more of a dark gray or black color, so it's more transparent in nature. Also mentioned that we've got some pretty unique features as part of this prototype with a rooftop terrace. This has connection to the third-level bar, it's used as a lounge area that overlooks the outdoor patio and the other terrace levels. This is a great place to hang out for, again, food or beverage or just for socializing. A view of the outdoor patio, again, just an extension of some of the restaurant and lounge seating, a lot of outdoor yard games that we have here from cornhole and other things of that sort to accommodate people on a busy night. I know a lot of questions will be, what type of lighting do you have at Topgolf? This is an actual photo from a venue in Glendale, Arizona, at night. We don't have stadium lights, we don't have lights mounted on the net poles, there's no lights mounted on top of the building. All of the outfield lights are mounted to the underside of the roof canopy at each hitting bay. Those are angled diagonally towards the field of play and the outfield. All of that light is contained within the property boundaries, this is probably the best. best illustration of that that we could share. There's no light pollution outside of the property boundaries. We'll have a photometric plan that we'll provide as part of the site plan approval that illustrates that, but just to give you that context, there are some ball fields around that have outdoor sports lighting, and that's not the case with Topgolf. Any questions about the lighting before we move forward?
How, how, how much lighting is there going to be on the facade that faces 80? Is there going to be a distraction, the traffic?
It will not. So we, the first photo that we shared was a nighttime photo of the front of the building that would face I-80. This would be facing towards 46. So you can see how the light dies out in the outfield, and then we'll have some landscaping along 46 as well to kind of buffer that a little bit as well.
I think the question would be, do you border any of the facade features as it faces 80?
No. Can we go, can we go back to that first photo of the front of the building? There you, oh, pass it.
What are the proposed hours of operation?
Yes, so the proposed hours of operation are standard hours are Sunday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to midnight. Then we have extended hours on the weekend that can extend to 1:00 a.m. or 2:00 a.m. This is the actual view from 80. That's what the building looks like. There's architectural lighting. There's some embellishments on the building, but that is the view that will be, motorists will see traveling on the interstate.
That's coming westbound, correct?
West and east. So that will be the view that's facing directly south. So if you're driving on I-80.
I'm going west on 80.
You're going to be north of 80.
Yeah, you're going to be north of 80.
Right side.
Westbound side, north of 80.
Yes, yes.
If we went to Edison, can we see that particular facade?
No. Edison opened back in 2016. Mount Laurel opened in 2018. This is a brand-new prototype since then. So very, there's some similarities to them, and this is, again, a representative of what we're planning for participating. That's an actual photo. All of these photos are actually from Glendale, Arizona.
What's the height of the part that says Topgolf?
Yeah, the highest point on this building is the parapet above the Topgolf. That's about 56 feet, I believe. That's part of one of the variance requests tonight as well. Otherwise, the building's around 50 feet tall. The parapets just bring us above that.
So the building actually acts like a billboard?
Yes.
Well, the building signage is integral to brand awareness, but yes.
This is Glendale, Arizona?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's.
So if you looked it up, how recent is that?
This opened in 2018, the fall of 2018.
So what likelihood Google has?
Obviously, last year.
Yes, sir. Yeah, this was the first one of its kind of this prototype.
You were at Arizona?
Just out of curiosity, the reasoning for that to be in the back and not the front, rather?
Well, there's a lot of reasons, the way that it fits the site, but certainly for brand awareness along I-80. We're a destination type of use. It's very important for folks to understand what they're driving by, to identify it with the user as Topgolf, but also for exiting purposes off of I-80 as well. It's for brand awareness, especially in a situation where, unlike a shop ride or a restaurant, this would be the only one in the region. We don't have multiple units that can go to a township or tour city. Think of this as, I think folks have probably been to maybe IKEA down in, around the Newark area. This is similar type of thing where you have one type of venue like this that would serve a large regional area. So having that brand awareness and having that signage is critical because a lot of folks in New Jersey and the Northeast, they're very unfamiliar with Topgolf. They pass by this large building, the net poles, and they, what is that? Well, those utility poles. They can't identify what that use is, so this certainly is a way to communicate that to our future, future guests.
I just want to get straight to that. I'm on Route 80. I'm heading west. This will be on your right-hand side.
Go back to the site plan.
Is that the corner of the building, or is that the wall that's parallel to 80?
Site plan number two. It's like an angle. That wall's parallel with 80. Parallel with 80. So that. I have the laser. All right. What's that? All right. Everybody see the laser here? So the photo that we were just sharing is at the front of the building here. So that is facing 80. With a slight orientation, if you're going eastbound, you will see directly into the front of the building.
What would be the treatment of the ends of that structure? It's kind of bold.
Yeah, so that's a solid wall on the end, but obviously what we just shared, the north-facing part is the T-line, so that is an open, essentially open building area for the purposes of the driving range. But the side of the building is closed. Usually have egress stairs on the side of the building, and the front of the building, as we've shared the photos, that's representative of the main entry to the building.
So that signage is going to be parallel roughly to 80 as opposed to being perpendicular to the traffic coming?
Yeah, we'll be diving into signage in a little bit more detail, but I'll give you just a quick Cliff Notes version right here. The monument sign we talked about on 46, roughly in this location, by the right, the existing right-in entrance off of 46. The signs we just looked at with the photo of the front of the building are located here. There's another sign proposed on that side of the building, and then on that side of the building that would be visible along 46, and then we have a pylon sign that's proposed along I-80 as well, so that when you're driving along I-80, you have that vision of the pylon sign that would be perpendicular to 80 as opposed to the front of the building wall, which would be parallel to I-80.
Isn't there another sign out there on 46?
So the other sign is within the outfield area and faces directly towards the T-line, the hitting bays. It's essentially for just enhancing the guest experience. The back of that sign is blank. There's no signs that, the back of that sign, there's nothing of any sort that has any type of signage. It's just a one-sided sign that faces the T-line itself.
Where's the sign that's roughly 160 or 70 feet long?
160 feet long. No, the sign that's in the outfield is about 58 or 60 feet.
Oh, wait, 68 feet.
There you go. That's it. That's the outfield. The end of the outfield, essentially, that's.
So that isn't facing 46 at all?
No, it's a one-sided sign. That's just for the benefit of the guest experience. So if you're in the hitting bays, playing golf and hitting the ball out to the outfield, that would be visible only from the hitting bay. There's no signage facing 46. Just a one-sided sign.
Great.
And all the parking, and there's no parking, but to the entrance of the structure up here?
Yeah, we've got some handicap-accessible parking close to the main entry as required by the ADA law. We have a delivery area on this side of the building, and then the majority of the parking is on the west side with accessibility from 46.
But all the entrance to the facility would be in that beige area up front here?
Yeah, so the two existing access points that serve the property today will be maintained as part of this redevelopment, which is a right-in access point here, and then a right-in, right-out access point right there.
Just so I have my bearings straight. The two white structures, is that the diner?
This, right here?
No.
On the left.
Nope, left.
Off of 46.
Yeah, a little left there, yes.
Okay, that, yes, that's the diner.
Okay.
Yes.
No.
Is that, is that the diner?
No.
I'm sorry.
That's a closed bank.
There we go.
Oh, okay.
Obviously, the Smithfield's right here, if I can see that. So the diner, is that the Empire Diner? Is that? Okay. Certainly, everybody knows Panera Bread and Target Shopping Center over there. Any other questions just about the location itself? Everybody have their bearings straight on?
The net, is that around the entire thing or just along the sides?
Yeah, so the netting is along.
Around the whole thing.
Yes. So the purpose of that net is just to keep the balls contained within the building for safety reasons.
Is it just the sides or is it along 46?
No, the netting is along the perimeter, on the west side, the north side here, and then it tapers back towards the building on the east side. Can we go back to that photo, the T-line, that you can see the nets in the background? Maybe, all right, there we go. Yes, you can see the netting, you know, gets taller in height the further away you go from the building, but then ties into the side of the building. Similar on the opposite side of this building as well. It extends all the way out. The length of this outfield is about 200 yards long. The height of those net poles are approximately 170 feet tall. Because of the three-story structure, that's what's needed to keep those balls contained in the field of play.
I guess that was my question. So you have three levels of bays?
Yes, sir.
And how high is the top of the net from the top bay? I got a wicked slice.
That's enough to control your ball.
I won't send my wife to Target if I'm.
Yeah, so from the ground level, we measure the height of that net pole from the ground level, the first finished floor elevation. It's 170 feet above that. And there's approximately 25 net poles as part of this, too. Again, as you can see, they stair-step up from, you know, 90 feet tall to transition to 170 feet tall, and it captures the perimeter of the playing surface. Let's go, any, I know there are some questions about lighting. Any further questions about exterior lighting?
I don't know.
No? Okay. All right, these are some more views. I'll get out of your way so you can see. This is some perspective renderings of what the venue will look like. This is a view from I-80. If you're going eastbound on I-80, that's the view we were talking about, what's visible from 80. That's the front of the building there. That's the parking lot area, 46, and the adjacent uses right there. So that's, that's the view. We have another view from 46. If we can go to the next slide, please. So this is at the primary entrance off of 46. This is the right-in, takes you into the parking lot, down to the front of the building. Using the net poles that will be along 46, landscaping as well along that frontage, and then a, you know, 385-space parking lot as part of the, part of the development.
So it's all openly?
Pardon me?
It's all open. The netting's there. You can see through. It's all.
Yes, yes. It's all transparent. You know, you've got, those net poles are probably, you know, four, four to five feet in diameter. Again, 170 feet tall at their highest point. I've got a sample of the netting. I'm passing around. If I can just get a little.
We'll mark that as 82.
Pass that around. That is the webbing of the net. It's about a one-inch net, polyester. If you hold that, we'll do a little demonstration here. If you hold that, whoever wants to be the guinea pig here, I'm not going to throw it at you. Clearly, with the one-inch netting, the ball's contained within that net, so.
We're not marking this, are we, Jeff?
We marked it 82.
The golf ball that goes.
How often do you have to change the netting, Jeff?
Well, we perform inspections on it on a daily basis. Because of the fabric, we have to make sure, you know, some oxidation because of exposure to the sun and everything. We keep extra panels of that onsite. Those are breakaway netting as well, so under extreme weather conditions, whether it's wind load or snow or ice load, that netting will break away and fall to the ground, so it doesn't put any type of structural pressure on the net poles. It's happened recently down in Florida with the hurricanes that we've had in Fort Myers that performed brilliantly. It did exactly what it was designed to do.
Do you have anyone try to climb that net?
Thankfully not. We have security that is onsite that cuts down on things after hours, makes sure nobody goes onto the outfield or does anything that they shouldn't be doing.
You have security after hours?
Yes, we have, generally have some third-party security between 6:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. There's always somebody at the venue, whether it's maintenance operations or part of our kitchen staff. There's always something going on there. A lot of the repair to the outfield and a lot of the electrical components happens after hours, just because you can't do it during hours with people hitting golf balls at them, so that's a period of time, generally, you know, one to two hours after the close of business, where they go out there and, whether retrieve the balls, make any necessary repairs. It's just part of the maintenance and repair program. Any questions about this view or the other? Can we go back to the other view? There we go. Any questions about that? Again, that's just a perspective rendering of what the built condition of these improvements will look like.
Have you done any studies with regard to the lighting? And I think you have, this may be the stupidest question I've ever asked, but you have, how many lanes of highway do you have there?
Eight.
Six, eight, 10, whatever is, and a development that's across 80, which I believe is heavily wooded between the houses and Route 80, you don't envision there being any spillover of light into those people's backyards?
Not at all.
Because I think they're the only residences that are, that are.
Are those offices? I think that's my, I think that's my development across the road.
What street do you live on?
Uh, Carlton.
Who?
Carlton, off of Troy Road.
That's off Beverly.
That's off of Beverly.
That's off Beverly.
Yeah, that's me.
Yeah, all the, all of the ambient light and noise from I-80 will drown out anything that we're producing at Topgolf.
That's why I said I thought it was probably one of the stupidest questions, but I just wanted to get that out in case.
Yes, sir.
Someone said, well, you're not being fair to the residences across the street.
No, yes, sir.
Now that you're hearing stupid, I'm going to try it.
All right, yes, sir.
Not top, but the site to me, when I see, go back to the screening, please. No, not that one. The last, last one.
Route 46.
Route 46, yeah. Right there.
Yes.
That's on Route 46.
That's right.
That ain't real good-looking to me. Only question I have is following, okay?
Yeah.
What if you flipped the site?
Yeah, well, we, you know, we've analyzed that already, and there's a couple of, you know, factors that have led us to this orientation. Number one, from a safety perspective, traffic access with the building that close to the, to the street would be extremely unsafe.
I don't follow that.
Okay. We, people would have to make a decision almost immediately after they turn in to the parking lot, whether to make a left, to park, loading area. All of that is front-loaded, and a split decision needs to be made. The access, and we have a traffic engineer, and it can speak in a little bit more detail of that, but from an operational standpoint, because of prevailing weather conditions, wind, sun, afternoon sun, we orient our building so that the T-line is always facing north or east, so the afternoon sun doesn't disturb the guest play and damage some of the technology associated with the, with the gameplay, and also the prevailing wind doesn't sweep directly into the hitting bays as well, whether that's, you know, wind, blowing, blowing rain or blowing snow. So it's for operational purposes as well. So those are the two main reasons. We've looked at both, and this is the only way that it will fit and that we can operate on this property.
Back to the safety issue, the reason that the access becomes more poor is because the hitting bay building is much longer than the outfield, and actually, the outfield actually.
Can you go back to slide two? I keep going back to that one, but, all right, that works too. So you see how the, the building is much wider, and it tapers on the outfield to a much smaller linear footage. Flipping that around creates that building width, almost taking up the entire frontage on 46. Doesn't really leave any safe reservoir space or access space for the driveways for access to the property.
Can you go back to the net? I love the open, buried-wired look of 46 that way. Are you burying all the telephone wires and utility poles, or are they staying up in front of the net?
This is, this is a rendering. I think that, I think they're showing some poles in the background. I don't believe, I don't believe we're doing that. I think all of the existing utilities, the engineer can. can speak to a little bit more on that. We certainly have underground utility easements, and I know there's some above-ground, overhead electrical lines, too. That just may not be represented in this rendering, because it would take away from the view we're trying to produce here.
Can you describe the experience of the golfer? What technology you have to describe that?
Sure. Can you go back to the photo of the hitting bay? Alright, there we go. I don't know if anybody watches PGA Tour on TV, but there's a technology called TopTracer. That is a ball tracking program. We have all of our new venues that we're constructing fully equipped with TopTracer. So this proposed venue will have that. The technology we're showing here is a little bit dated. The technology that you see with the video screens and whatnot are all integrated into the gameplay, but essentially, if you're hitting the golf ball from your hitting bay, the camera technology and the lighting technology will trace that golf ball wherever it lands, hopefully in a target, but it'll trace it wherever it may be, and it'll give you all of your flight path statistics of the ball, how far you hit it, how high you hit it, how much slice you have on it. It's essentially like having your own swing coach in your, in your bay with you. But it's highly interactive and immersive technology that resonates with the golfer and non-golfer alike. It's almost, you know, some kids like it because it simulates almost like a video game experience, but all of our, so our ball dispensers are here. Our new technology integrates the video so that's essentially within that ball dispenser. So the TopTracer technology, interactive games that you can play, all would be visible from that location on the screen. So, right now, some of our technology, people are hitting the golf ball, they're rubbernecking back to look at the screen to see where their ball went. This allows them to follow and track their ball visually, hopefully, again, goes into a target, but then to see essentially almost a replay of that on the screen on the ball dispenser that gives you all of those statistics for your ball flight. You can play a simulated golf here, golf course here, you can play interactive games like Angry Birds, and a lot of other video game type of, you know, interactive Topgolf gameplay, or you can just play traditional Topgolf where you're trying to score points by hitting it into the targets, similar to, almost like a, if you played darts before, closer you get to the center of the target, the further away you go, the more points scoring you have. Comes, again, as competitive as you want it, or just as loose and fun as you want it as well.
What's the safety mechanism that keep people from stepping over the edge?
Can we go back to the other, maybe the next slide? Alright, there we go. Alright, so this, this is what we call our fall protection netting, so essentially with three levels, two levels are elevated, can't have guardrails there, because that would defeat the purpose of the whole Topgolf driving range component. So we've essentially taken what would be a vertical guardrail or handrail, and extended that horizontally from the tee line. This is something that's very consistent with FAA for heliports, essentially is extended five feet out from the tee line, and it's a protection netting that if somebody does fall, it's able to capture, I think upwards of 500 pounds of weight, and then certainly there's extraction protocol if somebody does fall in there. I'd love to say it never happens, but unfortunately, things do happen, but there's a protocol that is in place for safety precautions if it were to happen. But we have found since we've employed this new safety netting procedure, there has been very, very little to no incidents, just a higher, higher safety, safety, you know, factor of safety with this fall protection netting. And that will be something that we prepare a detailed package and submit it to the building department, because it will be an interpretation that'll be needed, because most codes, this is an alternative to the vertical guardrail or handrail, and that will be something that our architect prepares and submits directly to the township, building commissioner and engineer for review.
Mr. Wilton, could you describe for us what the staffing is like on the site?
Yeah, so there are a variety of roles here. As I mentioned, we are creating upwards of 400-plus jobs. At any given time during a very peak period, which would be our week, weekend nights, we can have upwards of, you know, 125 employees here. Managerial roles, hourly roles, waitstaff, I mean, certainly with a full-service restaurant and bar, we have everyone from teenagers to senior citizens working at Topgolf. Just a fun culture, a fun, nice vibe, competitive wages, it's just a great environment for, for any person of any age to work. Alright, can we go, pass to renderings? Any other questions? I'm gonna transition and introduce our civil engineer, Josh Klein, from Stonefield Engineering, to speak to some of more of the technical details of the site layout, but any other questions before?
Any other questions by the board?
I will go, Mr. No. In the peak time, how many guests do you expect?
Yeah, so it, it's very popular, it's very, very normal on the weekend nights to have, you know, a two-hour wait or three-hour wait potentially, but this, this building, and my architect confirmed this for me, I think it's got the capacity of close to 1,000 people. If you do the math, 102 hitting bays times upwards of six people, capacity in each bay, and then upwards of 300 or so restaurant seats within the building itself, it, you know, it can be a busy place. You know, one, one thing to distinguish about Topgolf is our average guest size, people that are coming to this venue are carpoolers, three or four people coming in a car, the average day is two to three hours, so it's not a constant churn of vehicles, people are here for a longer period of time. Think of people going to a movie theater, you know, similar type of concept, where you're there for two to three hours, and you're going with a group of people as opposed to driving there separately.
So you said there were 300 and some odd spaces?
385 parking spaces, yes.
And I'm sure we'll get testimony that that's gonna be enough?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Well, we highly rely on rideshare programs, public transit, for not only our associates, but our guests. We have a partnership with, with Lyft to get people safely to and from their house, and it's quite popular, and I know that's something that's highly utilized in northern New Jersey.
Further questions for this?
Is there any members of the public have any questions of this witness or the testimony given this evening? I hear none, seen none. Okay, what's your, what's your lineup? How many witnesses do you have?
We've got three.
Yeah, so, right now, I'd like to introduce Josh Klein with Stonefield Engineering. He's the civil engineer of record for this project, and he'll be able to give a short presentation and answer any questions you may have.
Keeping in mind, we could buy for two, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, well, you're going just for the use here.
Well, you got the use in all the C-variants.
That's right. So Mr. Klein's gonna show you where the signage lays out exactly on the site, so we can nail that down.
Okay, alright.
And, you know, the variances, we've, of course, we're still in impervious variance, even though we've reduced impervious coverage, it's still a variance.
Right.
So he'll speak to that very.
Sir. I forgot to ask, in terms of the netting, in terms of the other communities that you're located in, is there any liability to the community if a golf ball gets through the net? It must happen.
You know, sometimes the balls may go under the netting if the skirt's not put in there properly, but anything that happens on the Topgolf site, certainly, that's something that we're responsible for. Our management's very proactive, very vigilant about that type of stuff. We have inspections of the netting, again, on a daily basis.
The town wanted to say we're all harmless, if something happens, that's not a problem.
No, that's a problem. Who, who are we holding harmless?
The township.
The town?
Yeah, if a ball goes out on Route 46 and then comes suing us.
Where's the town's involvement?
Well, they would sue, they would sue the board, the town for allowing it. You could get a suit.
They would sue the town and the board for.
Sue a ham sandwich, too, couldn't you? Sue everybody. Is that an issue or not?
Any incidents happen in the past?
Yes, sir, things are very, very rare, very rare that anything happens.
And if we snuff it off, it'll happen, that's right.
And very rare means it does happen, it just doesn't happen a lot.
There's always exceptions to things happening. In the east coast, the community, all of them travel quite as far, again, with, with the technology and, and the learnings of the past, we've had those net poles extended to 170 feet to, you know, prevent those types of things from happening. Certainly when we were starting out, the poles might have been a little bit shorter, and we've learned from those lessons based on trial and error and flight path trajectory studies, and have made those appropriate adjustments.
But you have the liability insurance if something did happen, is that correct?
Certainly, we cover, cover insurance, yes.
There's no municipal involvement in any case, so there's no municipal property surrounding this, and there's no cause of action against zoning or planning boards for approving uses.
Well, I, I'll give you this, I've been in a number of litigations where inspectors for towns have been sued because they came to close out an underground heating oil tank in a, in a town, in a residential home, and they sued.
That's a specific cause of action based upon.
Yep, so, so I've also been involved where they've sued the zoning boards, the planning boards, for approval of dry cleaners or certain uses that created injury to a third party. So there, there's potential for it, and I guess.
Did anybody win?
No, no, Title 59.
Survive for judgment.
They, they survive, they, they don't survive for summary judgment, because you have Title 59 immunitys, but I think the question is, is there, is there, it's a fair question that the planner asked.
I don't see any legitimate causes of action, if you would be giving general waivers or deciding, assuming liability.
Maybe the site is right exactly on the highway.
Well, they have liability insurance for that, and that's the whole reason for the netting.
Okay. It would be absurd, wet netting, anyway. I mean, you couldn't be doing that.
I think, Joe, it may be something we can discuss, there's probably a fixed, affixed to it.
We'll talk.
You swearing, man?
Uh, no, sir, raise your hand, you swore a firm testament about to get before the board to see yourself, you got, for the record.
I do, yes.
Can you state and spell your name?
Josh Klein, K-L-I-N-E, Stonefield Engineering and Design, 92 Park Avenue, Rutherford, New Jersey, 0707.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes.
You've been qualified either before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
I have, yes.
Mr. Chairman, the witness has been sworn and qualified as a expert in engineering.
If you're very briefly using the slide currently being projected, identifying where the signage is located, is we can nail that down for you.
Yes, it's no problem, I'll be, I'll be very, very quick tonight. So again, we have 80 on the left-hand side of the screen, or to the west, and then we have 46 on the right-hand side of the screen, again, the building highlighted in the object in yellow. So there is a monument sign by the entrance, sorry, by the northern entrance on the top right corner, that was shown in one of the renderings as you come in. Again, there's a sign that's shown at the edge of the, of the kind of hitting area, and so that sign's kind of contained within the netting, so it's not along 46, it's not facing 46, it's kind of contained within the, the hitting area. And then there is a pylon sign located at the back of the site, and I think the key there is that the sign is kind of perpendicular to I-80 versus where the building runs kind of parallel. And then there is the signage kind of along the back of the building, the left-hand side, facing I-80, and there are signage, signage at both the top and the bottom. I think the, the big thing, what we look at from a site civil engineering perspective, and again, this project, we'll go into site plan approval next, and that's where I probably will do the majority of my talking, is, you know, we did prepare preliminary engineering plans, and I think the key really here is that we show that, you know, this site, this use, and kind of what we're proposing here tonight, it can be safely accommodated on, on this property.
Could I interrupt one second? We have architect renderings of signs. Are they up to date with the new building?
Yes. Correct.
It says tenant, that'll be Topgolf?
Correct.
But the, the profile, the configuration of the building and what have you, is, is the new version that you explained? It's now in Glendale, Arizona, but not Edison.
So, the photos that we have shared, and also the renderings that you have in your hand?
Yes, sir.
Are representative of the same building. This, certainly what we have shared tonight.
Okay.
On the PowerPoint slide has been Topgolf specific signage, that indicates tenant signage. There's one exception to that that we will share, there we go, and this is a relatively new addition, I mentioned that we have an added feature at Topgolf venues now, which is the TopTracer technology. We have added a tagline sign, if you can see on this slide, Topgolf signs is identical to what you've seen previously, just with the tagline underneath that says Powered by TopTracer, it's about a 50 square foot or so, I mean, say 60 square feet, a 60 square foot sign, that's a tagline to the Topgolf wordmark. That's the distinction between the plans that you have that were submitted, and then what we're sharing tonight, because this is, again, we've only added this on a few projects with, the first one back in, in, just last month, in Louisville, Kentucky, and this is a photo from that Louisville, Kentucky location, that was the first one where we added this type of signage on this type of building.
The other change is the, the logo of the shield, that's also incorporated into the entrance area, it's gonna be facing I-80, and of course, under your local ordinances, that would be considered part of the sign.
Correct.
So that's.
Now, that's lit, correct?
Yes, if we can, you know.
Do we have that photo in?
Yeah, can you go back to, I forget what slide it was, we've talked about it a few times, that is actually an architectural embellishment, the architect can speak a little bit more about that, but that is essentially engraved into the exterior building materials, it's not a physical sign as the channel letters for the Topgolf wordmark, is essentially an architectural embellishment with architectural lighting.
Now, that symbol is the same symbol as we saw in the daytime photo?
Yes, that's correct. So this, this is a nighttime photo that has the architectural lighting around some of the perimeter of the, of the building, and then that illustrates, we'll show this, everybody can look at this photo to get that picture in your mind, and then we'll go back to the daytime photo.
I'm having a tough time getting a grip on that, that symbol. In the daytime, it looks, you know, we golf.
There you go. It's a shield logo, it's essentially a target with a pin flag in it, that's what it is.
And it's rounded the corner on the front, you can see.
Yeah, this, yeah, this.
When you see it lit, I don't know.
This, this wraps two wall planes, it's kind of on the corner of the building, it's kind of a dynamic look to it that gives it some visual interest, but it's harder to see in the daytime, the nighttime photo, I think it, it's illustrated a little bit better because it's illuminated around the.
Let me straighten out.
I'm sorry to interrupt your presentation.
Josh, we've got that sign, which is different than what's on the exhibit, but we do have the signs on the sides of the main building.
Correct, there, there are additional Topgolf signs, kind of at the ends of the hitting bays.
We don't have those on the rendering, right?
They're, they're on there.
They're on the render.
Correct, yeah. They're shown as part of the elevation that were submitted.
They are similar to the sign on the.
Oh, they're the little red boxes on the thing? Okay, okay, got it.
Yep.
This is the scale then, right?
That's the scale for that.
Exactly. Can I see it right up?
It's similar to what's on the front of the building, it's just a wordmark, slightly smaller, except the wall plane is smaller, so it's instead of a four or five foot tall channel letter, I can't remember what that says, but it's under a roof.
And that's what I mentioned.
Thank you.
Pushed wall, side elevation, similar to the sign.
As I mentioned, we're reducing the pervious coverage, but we're still on the variance.
Correct, I think, you know, that's one of the improvements about the project, is we are reducing the impervious coverage on site, and I think the real benefit you see there is, you know, when we start talking about stormwater, you know, naturally, we're reducing runoff, we're cleaning the water on site. The project will, is a major development, so we'll require stormwater management, and we will have to treat the water. The initial kind of plans as submitted, we show using, you know, forest pavement systems in order to kind of filter and treat the water before we discharge it, as well as a, as well as a bioretention, all of this will be part of the site plan.
I have a question about the, you were seeking a Highlands exemption from the Highlands Council, if I recall from the correspondence?
Correct.
Have you heard anything from them?
We have not.
I'm sorry, what was the question? Highlands, oh Highlands.
Right. They were seeking an exemption, but we haven't heard back yet.
So I have no further questions for this witness, we'll save the parking questions for the next one.
Any questions by the board?
Yeah, going back to the, the signs that are on the net facing the bays, so the backside of that is black, you said?
It's black, yes.
Alright, because it's not on that, it's not on that rendering there, but I'm just wondering, you're just gonna see a black sign on 46, is yours, well, I'm asking, or will there be Topgolf on there as well?
No, there, there won't be anything. No, there, there won't be anything shown on the sign. You can kind of see it in the rendering. You know, there, there's some existing, and again, this is just a representation, but there are existing trees. Anything that we can protect along 46, we will. We're also showing, just on the preliminary plans, again, in site approval, we'll, we'll fill this in, but we're showing kind of new trees being planted, as well as looking at potentially kind of introducing some evergreens in that area too. So it, you won't see a black panel. It'll definitely be a mix of landscape.
Gotcha.
Just to confirm, there's no freestanding sign on 80, it's just the wall mounted sign.
Oh, here it is.
But there is a freestyle.
There's a, a pylon sign along 80. There's a, I believe it's 50 feet.
How tall?
50 feet.
The building is what, 50?
The parapet is, is approximately 56 feet. And then again, on, on 46 is a monument sign. I believe it's about 10 feet tall.
Yep. So I could. Foot tall by how wide?
Get the exact, I want to say, want to say six, but we don't check that.
29 long.
Oh, no, the monument sign. Right, that's it.
No, you're talking about the, the pile.
Oh, 80, sorry, sorry.
12 feet, is it?
60 feet high. Dimensions are what, sir?
50 feet high. It's 12 feet by.
68?
68 feet.
So I guess my question earlier about why the building was facing backward, back that way onto 80, the answer was because it's to be seen, obviously, right? You want the, the advertising quote unquote to be seen from the building. So having another sign there, isn't it kind of redundant?
Yeah, I think it was explained well by Mr. Waldo. I think, you know, there's, there's the parallel element of the building, but this sign is perpendicular. So, you know, and again, as, as people are moving on, on 80, you know, that building being parallel, you know, might not be something that kind of catches them in terms of kind of what they're looking for, where this sign is, it's very easy to read, and it's kind of perpendicular to the path.
You really think people aren't going to see the sign on that building that size along Route 80?
I didn't.
Well, there's 10, 10 lanes tread.
Correct.
That sign, that sign is bigger than the billboards.
I get it.
No, no.
Do the math.
This sign will be, will be visible. Correct.
The building will too.
Bigger than the billboards is what Mr. Child would say. The billboard signs.
The building is bigger than a billboard. Correct.
This sign.
This sign is.
This pylon sign will be bigger than a billboard sign on, that you saw.
Correct. The sign will be, yes.
Why so vague, Lee?
Well, I'm bigger than a billboard sign. Billboard signs are usually 10, 12 feet tall by 30.
Billboards are 14 by 48. You do the math. 672 square feet. How big is that?
It's a little bit smaller.
You know, we need to get this on record.
Yeah. Yeah. I could have warned you, this board has current experience with billboards.
Yeah. You mentioned.
You heard it, you heard it before.
The billboard dimension that you were referencing.
I couldn't understand.
You mentioned the billboard dimension you were referencing was 14 feet by 48 feet, 14 feet tall by 48 feet wide. Is that correct? Yeah, this, this sign is obviously not that same size, but it's a large sign. So we understand that it's some concern. They would be happy to make it smaller, so it won't be comparable to what one may think of as a billboard. You know, I can do that calculation, but the height.
Can you make it the size of a billboard?
Well, that's a pretty large, smaller than that.
You're over that now. You're bigger, yeah.
Well, our, our dimension of the, if I can read that correctly, is 5 feet tall by 28 feet by, round, rounded to 29 feet.
You're not talking about the mind. You're talking on the Route 80 side or 46 side?
Yeah, you guys were asking about the pylon sign, right?
Oh, Route 80.
The big sign.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. That's the pylon. That is this sign that you're seeing on the right side of the paper. 50 feet tall. The dimension of that, if I'm reading that correctly, is 5 feet tall by 28 feet nine inches.
Then what's the 12 by 68?
That, that is, that is the outfield sign that is facing the T-line, that's not visible from any public right of way. That's correct.
Whatever the dimensions were, we've got.
Yes, so if we can read that out, that sign is 12 feet tall by 68 feet wide. So that is a sign at the end of the outfield that faces the T-line, that's only visible from the customers in the T-line.
Isn't it set down a little bit too?
Yes, the height of that, I can't read above ground. I think it's maybe 10 feet above ground or so. It's, it's a to be determined. Well, we've installed that previously. It's anywhere from elevated 10 to 15 feet above ground, and then it's 12 feet, the sign itself is 12 feet tall by 68 feet wide. So if that was your referencing, that is similar to, but that is not visible from a public right of way. It is a blank, a one-sided sign facing the building itself.
Only inside the facility.
You got it. Yeah.
So it's not, I'm sorry.
And then, and then the big sign that we're talking about outside is going to be 50 feet high, 28 feet long and 5 feet wide. It's going to be in the air 50 feet, but it's going to be 28 feet by 5 feet, correct?
Yeah.
That's the one on the bottom right.
That's correct. So this is the outfield sign, 12 by 68. That's along 46.
Yep, got it.
Only facing the building. This is the pylon sign we're talking about on I-80. That is 50 feet tall, 5 foot height by 28 feet nine inches.
And I think that is the sign that we have, probably have concern with.
That sign, if we can go back to the site plan, this, if you can go back to the colors, there we go. All right, so one, one more time here. Monument sign is located here. That's 46. The outfield sign is located here. Facing and only visible from the T-line. We've gone through the front building elevation signage, talked about the signage on the side of the buildings. Yep. And the pylon sign, that 50 foot tall sign is right here. And that would be perpendicular to I-80 and visible by motorists that are traveling east or westbound on I-80.
And 50 feet was determined by what? I mean, why 50 feet high?
Well, there's some vegetation along there for visibility with road elevation and the side elevation, that that would be something that would be visible by motorists that are traveling of, you know, more than 50 or 60 feet, 60 miles per hour.
And the building itself isn't enough?
Pardon me?
The building itself is not enough?
Yeah, the height, the tallest point of the building is 56 feet, just the orientation of that. So if I'm traveling, if I'm traveling westbound.
Yep.
On I-80.
Yep.
I won't see that sign until I'm past it and I'm looking, rubbernecking back to see it. If I'm traveling eastbound on I-80, I will see it because of the, if you see the orientation of the building.
Yep.
That is the front of the building where the sign is located. So I see it going one direction.
I think you said you were open to reconsideration, correct?
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So.
And Topgolf is how many letters?
Well, go back and we'll show you.
Seven, right?
Go back to the sign.
We got a lot of space on that big sign, that pole sign. It doesn't seem to be used.
If the board would consider it, we can make that sign smaller. I think the height of that sign is important so that it's visible from a distance, and that kind of cues the motorists or the guests that, hey, I've got to get off at this exit.
What we'll do is we'll ask the traffic engineer, how far away can you read a sign
Sure.
of the size of letters?
Yep.
Comes right out of a.
We've done a lot of sign studies on this.
Chapter 42, page 79.
Any other questions about signage? I know we've gone back and forth on that. We do have a planner that can speak in more detail to that. But any more questions for civil engineering?
Any more questions for the engineer?
I, I guess I do have one more.
Any questions?
It might be for Mr. Waldo again. I apologize if it is. So you were talking earlier about the number of parking spots and the need to see, people drive by need to see that Topgolf is here in this location. But then you also said that there's a two or three-hour wait and there's kind of carpooling. So not too many people are going to drive by Route 80, see Topgolf and say, I'm going to get off here and go play. It would be more of a planned outing anyway, right?
Yeah, as a destination, people will be coming to this venue, potentially from an hour away. They may not be familiar with the area and the roadway network. Everybody certainly has their electronic gadgets to navigate to and from, but having the visibility that I've arrived at Topgolf, I need to get off at this exit and physically seeing the Topgolf sign to identify such that that motorist or the guest will know where to, to go is important to us. And having that brand awareness is very important to us as well.
I think we have to acknowledge that it's as much, if not more, marketing than it is building awareness. Like between GPS, seeing that massive structure, knowing that you're going there and it's not an, oh, by the way, I think I'll do go to Topgolf right now.
Well, the other part of that is we have competitors out there that have similar types of operations. So you may want to go to a Topgolf, you may want to go to a Drive Shack or something like that. This distinguishes us from our competitors by having that brand awareness.
I'm not saying that's wrong. I'm just saying we have to acknowledge that this is a large part marketing and probably less so, how do I get to the building?
Well, it's, it's both. I would say it's both.
2022. I entered into ways and it takes me right there.
Yeah, but I, still, people are visual creatures. They want to see where they're going, not just staring at their phone.
To that point, I just have one more question too. If they're going westbound on 80 and they want them to see the sign, where do they have to get off? What's your plan? I know this is a traffic thing.
We've got a traffic engineer that can speak to that a little bit more detail.
Are we going to have the architect here as a witness today?
They are here tonight. If there's any questions from an architectural design perspective or things of that sort, they are here to testify if necessary.
But hopefully not.
I have no further questions for this witness.
I don't think the board does. And any members of the public have any questions of this witness? I hear none, see none.
You swore a firm testimony about before the board to yourself, you got?
Yes, I did.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Yes, my name is Matthew Sekler. That's S.E.C.K.L.E.R. I'm with Stonefield Engineering Design, address is 92 Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey.
And your testimony be traffic?
Yes, it will.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, they are.
And you've been sworn either before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
I've been before this board and over 150 other boards as a traffic engineer.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn as an expert and qualified.
Very quickly, let's talk about the access.
Yes. So the site today has access via two driveways. One is a right ingress driveway located on the western side of the site and a right in, right out driveway generally in the center of the site when you're looking at the frontage along Route 46. The site today is developed with medical office and office buildings totaling a little bit over 100,000 square feet. When we look at it from a traffic perspective, those office and medical office buildings peak what you would imagine typically during your rush hour time periods. People coming to work, people leaving work, going to their doctors in middle of the day, that is when the site, when it was fully operational. Obviously, it's not fully operational now, but that's when that site peaked. Route 46 is a heavy directional roadway, much higher traffic in the eastbound in the morning, which is our frontage, higher traffic westbound in the evening. As you heard from, from the applicant in terms of trip generation, the peak hours of a use like this is outside of typical peak hours of Route 46, especially the direction of traffic. This is not a site that gets significant amount of their peak volume, 7:00 in the morning, 8:00 in the morning, 9:00 in the morning, when really that's the traffic along Route 46 along this side of the road. So overall, from a trip generation standpoint, I would say this is more consistent, or I'd say it is filling the gaps in capacity better than the current, what the site previously operated. The site previously peaked when the roadways peaked, this site peaks outside of the typical roadway peaks for this section of Route 46. In terms of other approvals, DOT, we've applied for a letter of no interest to the DOT. They indicated they agreed with our trip generation that this will not be a significant increase in traffic compared to the previous uses. They warned us to ensure before they issued the approval that the driveways would maintain exactly as is. That is DOT's requirement in order to maintain a permit. You cannot make any improvements within DOT right of way. You can repair in place and kind, but you cannot change dimensions of the driveways. So again, what you see on the plan here are the exact dimensions that operate the site today, and we believe based on this operation will be able to accommodate that traffic as well. There was testimony provided, and again, I'll just echo it in terms of why the site is facing this direction from a traffic point of view. I think it was hit on that the, again, the width of the Topgolf building and where you're basically shooting, hitting your shots from the bay, you flipped it around, it leave you basically limited or no access really to have ability for vehicles to come in. And they basically have to be parking all along the 80 side. So again, from a traffic point of view, be able to, be able to maintain the two existing driveways is a benefit and again, the lower trip generation. Heard a number of questions, while we're talking about how people are getting to the site, I think there was a question about, I don't know if it was westbound traffic or eastbound traffic. Essentially, if you're on 80 and you're heading westbound, you'd be getting off at the Smith Road interchange, work yourself through, and you'd basically get yourself to 46 eastbound, enter the site from 46 east. You're going in the eastbound direction on 80, you'd be getting off at Beverwick, going to the light at 46, making the left, having to go through the jug handle at Baldwin and work yourself back towards 46 eastbound. So again, this site is accessible through your normal interchanges up and down Route 80. Lastly, parking, I've heard a lot of discussion, or a lot of discussion about it. Again, you heard from the applicant in terms of the operator who's done a number of these sites, and obviously, it's part of their business to make sure they have sufficient parking and they have other sites of similar parking as we've seen here. You know, even at a max capacity of 1,000 people, you consider the, the large amount of carpooling, the fact that this is not, you know, everybody arriving alone, you know, when you're talking about an evening activity, you have people going to dinner, going as couples, going as families, going as carpooling, that that really helps cut down on the amount of cars that are utilized on a site like this. In addition, as they mentioned, they have a partnership with Lyft. I know, again, as, as my generation and younger, when you are, you know, enjoying I know again, as my generation and younger, when you are, you know, enjoying some alcoholic beverages, there is definitely a trend to use ride sharing type mechanisms or obviously utilize a designated driver, which again helps reduce the parking load on site. For employees, there's obviously a wide range of employees, but obviously some employees may be those that either don't own personal cars or someone else may be using it at the same time. We do have the bus stop that's located at the Baldwin intersection and obviously the more municipal lot that's located at the Beverick intersection as well. So we are actually well-served by mass transit, which is not always the case in some suburban locations that Topgolf is built within. So that is an option as well.
Do you have supplies?
Yeah, so when we originally, when we looked at the parking analysis and we actually broke down the individual uses of the building and looked at the fact that there are offices in this building, there's a restaurant, there's a bar, there's the recreational aspect, the obviously golfing aspect, the pro shop, which you could consider a shopping center, and then the kind of locker rooms that are used in the site as a health and athletic club. We break down each one of those uses that are occupying the site. We actually are considered compliant with the parking that the ordinance has. And again, we are providing 300, I think it's 84, 85. And with that breakdown of each individual use, the requirement would be about 248, 249, depending on when you do your rounding. So overall, from a parking standpoint, we believe that we actually are compliant when you look at all those uses. And again, you know, the applicant has walked you through all the various components, the restaurants, the bars, the, all the patios, all of that, we've accounted for in the way that we've counted our parking summary by breaking down each one of those uses.
I have no further questions for this witness.
No questions? Yeah. It just doesn't seem like there's enough parking. I mean, you said you could have 200 employees, correct? Is that the right number?
I think the number, well, that might have been that they employ overall. I believe the max peak was 100 to 125 was the peak shift if there's a busy Friday.
Yeah, 125.
A hundred and some odd employees.
Yep.
Most of them probably are not carpooling, wouldn't you think?
There may be some kitchen staff that may be carpooling in back of house.
There's no train, the bus isn't great, so most people will be driving. You said there could be 1,000 people there all night.
I believe the 1,000 people was related to some of the building load, which would include the employees in that as well. So again, the rule of thumb for a lot of, you know, restaurants, bars, you know, I'm going to say banquet halls, those type of entertainment venues, you typically sometimes utilize a parking ratio of one car per three people. And 1,000 people, that comes out to about 333 parking spaces, which again, we're at 384. So we're, again, some one per three, some one per two, some could be one per four, you know, four people in a single car. But basically you're right around that number of 384 parking spaces, which is what we provide on site.
Was a parking deck ever considered?
Not that I'm aware of. Again, the traffic engineer don't know when they were looking at the site if that was considered.
It was, so no parking deck was ever considered.
Gotcha.
Do you know how big the building is, square footage?
Uh, let's see, I have...
I believe the boss does. How many? Six, eight thousand.
That's footprint.
That's, yeah, that counts every floor, like a floor area.
Staircases, everything.
Yes, back of rooms, kitchens, things like that.
You have parking for EVs? I think I saw somewhere in here 20 or so.
Yes, we are providing, I believe, 28 EV parking spaces.
What about, I've heard Lyft, Uber, Rideshare, whatever you call it, mentioned a couple of times tonight. Do you have separate parking for them?
There is an ability, if you look at the area near the bottom here, that could be utilized for kind of a pickup, drop-off location, but we don't have the specific parking stalls for them. So again, that would be beyond the 384 actual stripe spaces, but there'd be ability to, again, if it becomes a popular Lyft destination, which again, it sounds like the applicant has partnerships with Lyft, that would be the ability for them to stack and wait or drop off and not disturb the parking.
Okay, and for previous testimony, you're going to have one entryway, right? Right turn only in, is that correct?
We have entry in, then in and out.
In and out.
In and out.
Okay, so if I'm coming there, obviously the first entry is going to be the one that's entry in, okay?
Yes.
So majority of your traffic is going to start going in there now. My concern would be you have little or no backup area out on the 46 for overflow, okay? I mean, I think you guys are going to be quite successful and I believe Mr. Reddson said, I'm very concerned about the parking, total parking, so. And I know you got the numbers and you're in compliance by the traffic study. But with 100 employees and then 1,000 people there, okay, at good success times, 385 parking places, you're going to cut it in my personal and professional opinion as well. So, but back to the question, what happens if they're stacked? They're coming into that driveway and they're trying to get into parking places. So all the parking places are right off that one entryway?
So in talking with the applicant, because when we evaluated this layout, is what we likely would do is the first parking spaces as you enter, because they're actually the least convenient to the building, would likely be employees' parking spaces. So those spaces would not have turnover, because I agree with you, one of my concerns would be someone backing out of these spaces at a time where it's peak. So that, you know, again, we could work with your engineer, the board, designate whether it's 10, 15, whatever those first set of spaces, because honestly, we want to keep the spaces close to the building for the customers and that space is as far from the building as possible, so that should be for the employees.
That'd be nice if there were some problems.
The traffic study, was that, I mean, again, I don't know what the impact will be to this question or not, but was that considering what we just went through with the Chick-fil-A and the traffic that's going to be out there on 46 due to the Chick-fil-A coming in there? And then everybody's going to be turning around to get the Chick-fil-A, to get the Topgolf. It's, again, they're both successful businesses, I'm sure. I just think it's going to create a bit of havoc right there, is just my opinion. You know, it's just something to think about. I don't know if they did the study.
What's traffic than the office operation?
I think most of those are empty at this point, aren't they?
At this point, yes, but obviously in the, you know, when it was fully open, you know, that was obviously a significant parking field you saw. Those were people coming basically all together in the morning and all leaving together at night, except, you know, some, maybe some visitors in the middle of the day.
Your traffic study didn't really refer to any of the experiences of Topgolf, but you were more...
We utilized, I would say, the trip generation rate that's typically associated with just driving range. Now, we did also look at if we were, let's say, a driving range plus all the restaurant space that's within that building. So if we considered, I think it's about 300 seats worth of restaurant bar space. So even if we were the driving range type of use from a trip generation standpoint and added all of the restaurant use from a trip generation standpoint, we'd still be less trips than what the existing site generates. The one other aspect is that...
I'm not concerned about the trips. I'm concerned the same question's been asked. You get all these people on here and it's two people per car, we've got a problem. If we've got three people per car, we're okay. And how do we, how do we deal with this? Because basically you've got to use various, someplace you're going to get, hopefully you'll get an approval. At some point, we're going to say how many seats has, can be in that restaurant? How much space is going to be used for a gym or whatever else is in there?
So again, based on the architectural plans...
Do you often report that definitive?
So, no.
There are Topgolf's with less parking?
Yes, there are.
And there are Topgolf's with more parking?
Yes, there are.
Based on your comparisons to Topgolf operations, what we're proposing here, is this going to work? I think everybody's, the question everybody is asking is, is this going to work? Are we going to put it in and are we going to have people lined up down 46 trying to get into the site, as Mr. Reddson said, or cars overflowing? What's...
Yes, the parking will work for this operation.
And that's based on Topgolf operations?
Yes, based on, yes, existing sites. I mean, unfortunately I haven't been able to travel to all of the Topgolf's, but I do know they have operating sites that have sufficient parking for the peak periods of time, that have less parking than this and the same amenities as this site. So same number of bays, same number of restaurants.
So, no, I'm sorry, but occupation wise, you know, occupant wise, did you look at those numbers and it's not always 1,000 people in there?
Oh, no, no, no. Correct.
I mean, I would look, I would look at the Edison site and say, the regional population density is similar to here. The highway system is not quite as complex and sophisticated as here, but it's there.
It's close. They've got the Parkway and 287 there.
Well, morally, it's totally different world.
Yes.
So the Edison one is, how big is the parking lot of that one?
I think that one is in the low 400 range, so probably 415, something in that range.
I doubt we'll finish tonight, right Joe? Oh, we will, we will.
I was hoping that, hope, but we're running out of time.
Maybe we could get the answer to that one, because I would think the, as I said, the population density, the highway system, everything, not exactly the same, but... And the wait time that you think you'll have on Saturday night is... How long?
That wasn't my, that was...
It was two to three hours of stay time, right?
But you can make appointments, you can make reservations, can't you?
That's right.
We wore it out.
You don't, you don't just show up.
Yeah, just for parking, we've got similar venues outside of Atlanta, Georgia, Dallas, Texas. I live, you know, 15 minutes from a venue in Dallas, Texas that has much higher population in this area and has less parking, functions and operates just perfectly. I wouldn't be investing multi-millions of dollars to bring a Topgolf to a new market if I didn't think it would operate appropriately and have enough parking. I mean, that's essentially the synopsis of it. It functions, it will function properly based on empirical data from other Topgolf's and our operational knowledge from operating over 86 of these worldwide.
The only concern is, the concern here is it is right on the highway.
Most of our locations are all along interstate-based locations, because they're destinations, so...
Edison one is off.
Edison's a little bit different on US-1, but that's a pretty highly-traveled roadway as well. Most of our locations are more interstate-based, again, because of the regional destination. So whether that's, you know, and the one I cited in Atlanta, Georgia, one in Dallas, Texas, are all off major roadways that have far higher roadway capacity than IA.
So on the, on the screen, could you go to the picture that shows the adjacent property that is west?
It's Smithfield.
There you go.
No, the diner was there.
No, that's a capital one.
The bank. So is there a way to have parking for employees at the adjacent lot? That they could have a deal with the adjacent neighbor just to take some load off of your property? I agree with you. It's your business, you want it to succeed.
Sure.
You're not going to put it in where you can't get your customers, but we still have to...
Yeah, we certainly can explore that, but I think the testimony tonight is that based on the traffic study, based on parking demand studies, we are compliant with code and we want it to be successful. We don't want to bring something here that's going to be operationally under stress. So if the need arises where there's some offset parking that's necessary, we don't feel that it would be, but there could be opportunities.
The clients you've mentioned mostly are some or a little by the appointment?
There is a reservation system, yes, sir.
And what would you say, the population on a Saturday night came in?
Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to make that more mainstream for the reservations, but we have a lot of corporate events that are booked. We have what we call walk-ins, who come in with no reservations, no events, and there's a certain percentage of that, but a lot of people...
That's what I'm trying to get to. How much of that is...
I don't know the exact breakdown, but more and more reservations. Yeah, there's more, probably 50% with reservations or some type of event and less than 50% that are walk-ins. And usually with the walk-ins, the extended wait, two to three hours, there's overflow space within the restaurant or the bar. Again, some people come and they don't want to take part in the Topgolf game experience. They're not going to a hitting bay. They're just coming to watch a game or have a meal with family or friends. So that's not essentially the wait time for all of the accessory uses within the building. It's more of the wait to get into a hitting bay itself, which not all of our customers want to do.
Mr. Chairman, along these lines, we'd like to offer this as an option. After approval, once this site is open, if there are operational problems relating to the parking, we will commit to enter into a post-approval agreement with a neighboring property to provide additional parking.
To off-site parking?
Yes, additional off-site parking.
Great. Okay.
Do you anticipate... Cars?
In the early stages, once you're open for the first time, do you anticipate the excitement resulting in wait lines on 46?
Yeah, I was, well, I was just saying. No, no, I was, I was actually looking back, because I know a lot of operators, when they bring new things to market, they will inform the police, potentially have some police presence to assist with getting people on and off a site when you have that first opening week, opening weekend type of thing. So I was looking back to see if that's something they've done when they've come to other markets. But again, that's something that's happened, obviously, in the past for other projects that I've worked on, not this one.
Well, I think his question was off-site improvement on the highway, another lane.
Well, there certainly is a honeymoon period during grand opening, but we would work with public safety to ensure safe passage for ingress and egress. That's generally never a problem. The wait that we have is to get in the building within the lobby area just to get into a hitting bay, not traffic that's generated along the roadway. So we don't envision that being a problem, but we certainly will work with public safety officials to have a game plan or traffic management if that were to be the case. But I don't anticipate that to be the case and certainly by the testimony tonight by the traffic engineer, we don't perceive that to be a concern.
They're all owned, company-owned, right? They're not...
Yeah, all of our venues domestically are corporately owned. That's correct.
Are you affiliated, so you have the one in Morristown, the suites?
No, that's not us.
So that is not you.
We may license some TopTracer technology to them, but that is not a Topgolf venue. As I mentioned, there are some, you know, competitors out there, which is the importance of distinguishing ourselves, not just seeing tall net poles and saying that's...
No, they're only suites. They're indoor.
Yes, so probably just golf simulator suites, yeah.
Any members of the public have any questions over recent testimony by either of these two witnesses? Hear none, see none. You got time for another one?
I think we do, because he's going to go very fast, aren't we?
I have no choice. I can do that. Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swore a firm testimony about the before the board's yourself you got?
Yes, I do.
For the record, can you state and spell your name?
Sure. T.J. Ricci, R.I.C.C.I.
How do you spell that? T.T.E.J.A.Y.?
T.J.
T.J., okay. Last name?
Last name, Ricci, R.I.C.C.I.
And your testimony will be?
Professional planning.
Okay, and all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, they are.
And you've been sworn either before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the witness has been sworn and qualified.
So you have examined the local ordinances and master plan, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
You are fully familiar with the application as it's being presented before the board?
Yes.
I wonder if you could give us your findings regarding the merits of this application? Spend a little bit of time going over that sign.
Yeah, sure, I'd be happy to. Obviously, it sounds like the board, you've heard extensive testimony from the applicant and our professionals so far about, you know, what we're intending to do on the site. Up here, we have a little aerial exhibit that shows the project site. It's outlined in black here. First thing that you notice, it's a very large piece of land. It's 10-plus acres in size. It's one of the largest pieces of land along this area. It's actually two lots, two through lots, for fronting 46 to the north and then Route 80 to the south. So we're here tonight seeking a use variance for this sports entertainment use. And this is not a use in a code that's prohibited in this area. It's silent on the use, because it's a pretty unique use. It's not generally, it's not always contemplated in, you know, non-residential office, commercial districts throughout a municipality. But we do think it is still very compatible and will fit in with this commercial corridor in the area. As the board probably understands, the criteria for granting a use variance is the Medici standard. And basically what we need to demonstrate is that this site that we propose the Topgolf on still remains suitable for this proposed use. And I think there's two main reasons. The first thing, like I mentioned, is the size of this piece of land. You see some of the commercial uses along 46, little bit smaller lots, smaller buildings. We do have a sufficiently sized property that we're working with. The minimum lot size for this area is 120,000 square feet and we have approximately 454,000 square feet. So we're four times larger. There's only a couple more districts that are actually, require larger pieces of land. Those are for garden apartments or, you know, recreational conservation uses. So when we look at, you know, offices or business districts that actually require minimum lot size, this is one of the largest pieces and we're still four times larger than the minimum. And obviously, Topgolf, you know, you have the driving range aspect of it. You need a sufficiently sized piece of land, so I think that's why it's, you know, so specific to this site. And then secondly is the location in this district. Obviously, we front, we have two through lots, so we front two major highways. Generally, in a office or commercial district, you have the highway and then you have usually the commercial uses and then they back up to residences. I think one of the biggest advantages of having this site is we don't abut any residential properties or residentially zoned pieces of land. So there's going to be, even we further lessen the impacts of this use. So, you know, the fact that, you know, we're through lot, we have the, you know, the access and the, you know, the visual aesthetic on the highways, we don't abut those residential uses and this, you know, conveniently is that large piece of land. I think it's a really appropriate property. It's a really unique site specifically, you know, suited for this, for this use. And then secondly, I think, you know, we look at site suitability in the site. I like to look at the neighborhood and what's around us. We are located in this kind of regional commercial corridor up and down 46. There's bars, there's restaurants, there's hotels, there's office campuses. This is one of those uses that I think complements those uses. People, you know, generally like to incorporate the entertainment use with maybe a dinner or people are, say, visiting in town and they're staying at a hotel and, you know, at night they like to go and visit the Topgolf facility. So this is one of those uses that I think is, has a lot of synergy with other uses in a commercial district. Helps everything thrive, kind of serves as an anchor for the area.
So you're saying that this site is particularly suited for this use given the surrounding neighborhood and size and street access?
Correct.
So can we talk a little bit about the... So can we talk a little bit about the signage?
Yeah.
Let's, let's just go right to the signage.
Let's do it. Um, I think we should flip to the rendering, and I'll point out kind of where the signs, where they're proposed. Let's go to the rendering from the top of, yeah, exactly. So basically, we're proposing, um, I'll start out with wall signs. We're proposing the four wall signs. So here's the front entrance, um, this is, this is Route 80 right here, just to orient the board again. Here, we're going to have the Topgolf. It's going to say Topgolf on the top, and then there's going to be that shield that we saw in that rendering, um, before, and that's going to be at the entrance of the facility. And then on the sides, we have two smaller sides, uh, up on the top, and then on the bottom edge of the building, basically just saying Topgolf.
And how big are those signs?
Those signs are... So I'll start on the front of the building, the word Topgolf, 220.5 square feet. And then the shield below it, which is measured, we basically took a square, and any part of that shield or logo that encompassed the, you know, the largest part of a square, 480 square feet. That's on the front of the building. And then the Topgolf lettering where they say the words Topgolf on the sides of the building, each of them is 56.9 square feet. Uh, the signs on-
The side ones.
Side ones.
Around the rim, Mr. Chairman. Are they?
Yeah.
On this here? Yeah. Those little red spots. Those little red spots on the side for sure. They look little red spots on this big building.
Uh, the sides of the sign. So they are, the signs on the sides of the buildings are two feet-
What's on the side?
Two feet, eight inches by 21 feet, five inches.
What was that? Two feet, eight. Two feet, eight by 21.
Correct.
And those face east and west?
Correct.
And the facade faces south.
Correct.
The one on the, the one on the right side, if you're looking from 80, is basically just going to be looking at right behind Target Building or LA Fitness or whatever it's called now. Just going to be like in the back of that building, right? If I'm not mistaken?
The one facing this side, you'll see.
Just asking.
We're going to, we're going to amend the application to remove the sign you just mentioned that faces the target. We're going to reduce the pylon sign from 50 feet tall to 40 feet tall and reduce the width of that sign down to 20.
From 28 to 20?
Yeah.
Same five, five feet, five feet, uh, high.
Still the five feet for the left side.
Yeah, so that's, um, basically the wall signs, and I think, I guess, since we mentioned the pylon sign, we are seeking variances for the height and the sign area. I think there was some prior testimony that was mentioned. Um, yeah, the, the sign is only as, as good if you can see it from the roadway, and I think the reason being is that it's trying to, um, be seen from people traveling along 80 from a distance instead of waiting till maybe they're right in front of the building and have to make that, that hard 90-degree turn from their cars. It's being able to see it, identify the site, and, and know that it's there. We are seeking variances for monument sign, once again, for the area and the height, 10-foot monument sign. That's going to be fronting Route 46. Um, that is pretty consistent with what is out there. I think that goes back to the safety thing. Um, it's not a sufficiently large sign, it's not, you know, um, out of character with what's out there. I think the goal is to really be able to identify the site, especially considering the fact that the building is in the back of the site. And, you know, you do see the netting, but like, uh, Mr. Waldo mentioned, part of it is branding and knowing that you see the posts, I see the monument sign coming down 46, that's Topgolf, and then that's where we pull in, comply. Lastly, we're seeking, um, variances for the maximum number of freestanding signs. So this is the monument sign and the, um, pylon sign that we're proposing. So you get one per frontage. So since we have frontages on each highway, we were permitted to have two, and we really have three. But the third one that, the third freestanding sign that, that triggers that variance, like we discussed, is the one that's located internally. That's not meant to advertise or be seen to the outside world, like we, you know, you've heard testimony before, that's part of the user experience. It's all internal. It's not meant to, to face the outside. So while we don't comply with the total numbers of the freestanding signs, the intent is met because we do have the one per frontage.
Given your analysis of the application, master plan, local ordinances, and the proofs that have been put on this evening, it's your opinion that we can grant the, uh, both the use variances and the bulk variances that have been requested here today?
That is correct, yes.
Do you feel these, uh, certainly some of these bulk variances associated with the netting and the, uh, and the signage are subsumed into the use variance itself?
Correct.
I have no further questions.
Questions by the board?
Yeah. Do you have any rendering that shows, uh, the three or four signs you have, uh, on Route 80 side? Uh, how it will look from Route 80? All the signs together, instead of having just showing us only one sign at a time? I mean, how, how it will look to a driver driving on east side or west side of Route 80?
Unfortunately, I don't believe that we have greater rendering to see how that sign would look for someone driving. We just have the, the signage plan with just showing the, you know, the elevations of the sign.
Mr. Faric, wouldn't you agree that we really should see what they look like in the rendering?
Absolutely. That's why I must.
I think that's going to be necessary.
Yeah.
There's a lot of sensitivity around this particular pylon sign, as you can tell. I think that rendering is going to be critical to any decision making.
How far is the building set back from the right of the way? Do you know?
You mean on 80 or 46?
80.
From 80? 61 feet?
And the building is 54 foot at the parapet?
I believe it was 56 feet, approximately 56 feet.
You didn't address that variance at all, or do you consider that, I mean, that's a D?
Right.
Mr. O'Neil asked if all the, you said they were subsumed within, but that's usually bulk variance.
Right. Right, and I think the rea- Right, so, so we are seeking the D6 height variance. 45 feet is permitted and 56.2 feet is proposed, um, at the top of the parapet. Really, I think the point of that is the, the standard prototypical design of a Topgolf, which is what we have proposed here, has a certain floor-to-floor height for the safety of patrons of hitting golf balls in the bays. They need a, they need a clear certain height, you know, to make sure that on the backswing and the swing of people hitting the balls, that, that tie enough. And, and really, this is the height that, from what I understand, has been pretty standard across the board of all Topgolf, Topgolf locations, so, so that's, you know, the reason being for that height. But I think when we look at it, it's not as apparent from the Route 46 roadway, and then obviously, you know, the building is to the back of the site and located along 80. So it's not super obtrusive to say the Route 46 commercial corridor having an extremely tall building there. It's almost, um, you know, located in the back here, and then you have these lines of trees, um, blocking it.
I agree with you, what you described on the Route 46 frontage, but Route 80 has a different character altogether. Uh, I mean, Route 46 is a jungle, it's got, you know, remnants of 1950s development still there, trying to get itself straightened out. 80 is a different story. And I think you need to address that.
Right, I mean, we, we really are not significantly over the maximum permitted height. I don't think that the height that is being proposed, especially on that facade, would be something that would be distracting to a driver on Route 80. I mean-
Would you agree that the visual impact of the additional height of the building along Route 80 is minimized by the fact that the traffic is high on the side and passes at about 50 miles an hour?
Right, I agree.
50?
Well, I'm thinking of coming down from South Everwood Road down the ramp, crossing down there, I do about 50. I think most of the traffic in those two lanes, which is immediately adjacent to the, uh, where the Topgolf is going to go-
Right.
-is going at about 50 miles an hour. I think that, uh, everybody else do at Mach 10, down the middle of the highway.
Yeah.
Contrary to glowing signs, it's not going to even notice it.
I mean, you've got, the most prominent buildings along that corridor are the big office buildings up by 287, and they're close to the building, and you might want to relate to that somewhat. But I think we've got an issue here that we need more pictures?
Yeah, part of that building height is, is for safety reasons, if I compress the-
I can't testify for you, but I think you could-
Yeah, well, I'm also sharing that part of that building height is to screen the rooftop units from view as well, and that's part of the parapet height, but also just if I-
What's the rest of that? If you, if you took the parapet height where the air conditioning-
You'd be able to see the, the rooftop units.
What's that height, the secondary height?
I think it's, what, six or eight feet, maybe? But if I compress anything further, certainly would not have any safe operation within the building. We cannot do that with the clear height between floor to floor.
I was, we're, you interpreted my comments, I was suggesting that it's not that. What I am saying to you is, I think you need to give examples of what is along Route 80 and how that you are compatible with your neighborhood, because that's your corridor, and that's the operative statements.
Yeah, and we're share, sharing with you here this perspective rendering that shows what's around us on, uh, Interstate 80. We've got a park next to us, and we've got a shopping center directly next to us as well.
The shopping, I think what concerns, the shopping center doesn't have a lot of front signs on Route 80 there. You're going to have two major, major front signs on Route 80. Can I, uh-
Sure.
This is the last witness, okay?
Good, you want to mention for tonight.
So I had a conversation with Mr. King about the, uh, application as it stands, and we do have some additional testimony concerning the height variance, but, uh, in relation to that, we are willing to remove the pylon sign completely from the application. I agree with TJ to continue with this calculation that he just worked out with our-
And, and I think your question was if we, if you reduce the pylon sign, then we at the board, would we still want that rendering?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm asking.
I don't think I need it. Without the pylon sign, you don't need it, right? That's, that's the hangup.
I think we're good.
You figured out what our issue was? Yes.
You know what? It's very, it's very funny, because your next-door neighbor, Target, when they came for a variance, and all they wanted was a Target on the building, we said, "You're not going to put up the name Target? No, we don't do that."
Now you're just taunting us.
What's that?
You're taunting him.
In terms of the height variance, your client did point out the characteristics of 80 and the compatibility of this, so I'm satisfied in terms of my question.
Do we, do we have any issues on the table right now? Starting down here with Chaz, are we okay?
No.
Well, maybe we start to go through site plan?
Yes, yes.
Okay. How about over here? Are there any issues? And you have no more witnesses? Is there any member of, that are here that is a member of the public and is not part of your group?
Yes.
Are there members of the public here? All right, the members of the public, uh, do you wish to speak in, uh, opposition to this application?
Questions first, right?
Well, I, no, I think, I think I already did that, didn't I? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness? Okay, that's no. Um, so, yeah, I guess there's only two, there's Gordon back there, I don't think, he may, he may, he may be asleep, I'm not sure. I don't, I can't see his eyes.
Frankie's.
So are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application and support of this application? I hear none and see none. You're done. You don't need to sum, do you? You're going to, you use your-
No.
You've done such a great job tonight. I mean, just, you know, it's gone, it's gone so smoothly. Anyway, my next question is, do we need to go into conference, or we're happy with what?
No, no need.
Okay.
Would you just summarize for me, now, Mr. Chairman, precisely what we're approving tonight, then?
We're approving the use-
Got it.
We are approving the facade sign, right? We're, we're proving the 40, the 46 sign, that's another variance. They have impervious coverage, but it's, they're actually shrinking the impervious coverage, so I guess you still need, you still need-
Still over the limit, but we're lower than these.
Right, so you need an impervious, and you're, and, uh, site plan, you will provide all the drainage and everything to make us happy.
And the building height?
Yes.
Building height?
The building height. Again, the building height is going to be facing 80, so-
That was a couple of feet, right? It was five feet or five feet. It's not, it's not ridiculous, nothing. How much over was it?
It's really parapet wall.
It's six feet. Not even the building.
And the parapet, I think your testimony was that it shields the air conditioning.
That's right. And there's a quick correct, uh, correction on the building height. I think it was 56.2 that was submitted.
Yes.
The actual building height is 52.2, so that's a clarification, so that minimizes the-
You're down to 52?
52.2.
And the ordinance allows 50?
No, the order, party-
Oh, 47.
So we've reduced that-
And again, that 52.2 is the parapet that shields the air conditioning.
Yes, sir.
That's about five feet, so if you took that off.
Yes. Still a variance, but it's less.
Do we have all the variance, sir? We have what we're proving?
There was parking variance too, right?
No, there were-
No.
I was incorrect in noticing for that.
Okay, I see that you have noticed for it.
Um, do I have a motion to authorize the attorney to draw up a resolution in conjunction with Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, sir.
Does that make the most sense? So moving?
Yes, second Goss.
So we make sure you guys agree on what, you know, what we're pushing? Okay, is that good? So that was moved by who?
Goss.
Second of all, ready? Any discussion, or call a roll?
Goss, Captain.
Yes.
Missorella.
Yes.
Faric.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willin.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. You're unanimous.
Thank you. Good luck. Thank you very much.
Nice presentation.
You just got to get a bill. I just got to get a bill.